Planning Commission meeting for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is now five thirty-one. If I could ask staff to do a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Fondre Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
And, excuse me, Chair Reese, actually, and Commissioner Raskin.
Here.
Thank you very much, staff. I think at this point, if we could have a planning director's report, appreciate it.
Good evening, Commission. Coming up next week, you have a special meeting on January twenty-sixth, and that's for the St. John's Development Agreement. On February second, Housing Element Implementation Phase One Red Lines. And then on February sixteenth, we have a major modification and map for a project at eleven twenty-four Seventh Street. Those are the upcoming Planning Commission meetings. City Council action on January eleventh. The council did a second reading of a ordinance that allows tattoo parlors citywide. Not everywhere in the city, but citywide commercial zones. Also, the council selected EAH Housing developers to be the development team for the thirteen twenty-fourth Street Housing Project. So this is the site of parking structure number three on Fourth between Arizona and Santa Monica. So the city will be working with EAH to finalize a project there, and then that will go through the process. And then hopefully eventually we'll have a new housing development at that site. Upcoming council items on January twenty-fifth, IZO extension for process thresholds. So this is the ordinance that allows housing projects to be approved administratively. IZO for permitting time extensions. Currently, the applicant has to wait until just a few months before their project expires before they can ask for an extension. So this would allow them to ask for that extension sooner. We are also taking an IZO for auto dealer showrooms on the promenade. This would allow a wider variety of auto dealers to be on the promenade. Right now, we allow dealers, but only if they're alternative fuel vehicles. This would open it up and allow also for other types of automobiles. And then finally, an IZO extension for the demolition procedures. On the housing element front, we are still awaiting comments on our adopted housing element of HCD. That concludes my update and happy to answer any questions, yeah?
Great. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I see Leslie's hand first.
David, on the January twenty-fifth agenda for the city council, the IZO for process thresholds, is that the one that sends code complaint tier two through administrative approval?
Yes.
So basically, that expired on December thirty-first?
It was extended by the emergency order. So it didn't actually expire. As long as the emergency order is in effect, the IZO continues. But we wanted to get it extended in case the emergency order expires.
So if an application came in during that emergency extension, it would be under the old, the IZO, basically, right?
That's correct.
And if they don't renew it on January twenty-fifth, what happens?
Well, again, it's still in effect as long as the emergency order is in effect. We just don't know exactly when that would expire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Landris?
Just following up on that, but we've committed in the housing element essentially to an extension of that IZO or, in fact, a permanent version of that IZO, right? That's part of our, that's one of our strategies for achieving our RENA number, right?
Yes, that's correct. So it's an important policy in the housing element that we will facilitate housing projects and provide a easier pathway. So yes, it's, this ordinance, IZO, is consistent with what we are putting forth in the housing element.
Got it. And then just coming back to your slides, particularly for members of the public who are watching, you put up one date each for Providence-St. John's DA and the housing element. But my understanding is that we are looking at two nights. Maybe one meeting, but each meeting is going to take two nights. Is that still the case?
On the, for St. John's, we had discussed a two-night approach with the chair and vice chair. And the consensus was that we would, you would try to get through it all in one night. So we are just scheduling next Wednesday night for St. John's. On the housing element, Jing, I'm not sure what the approach is there.
Yeah, February, so I think the way we've set it up, we've noticed that, so that the commission could, if you wanted to get through your discussion and, you know, vote your recommendation on February the second. But we did pull the commission for availability on February the third. You know, if you, if there's spillover, it appears that, you know, the commission is available for that additional night as well. I think that we just kind of, you know, have it open for that possibility.
And so for members of the public who are anticipating giving public comment or scheduling by when they need to send in public comment, that would be on the second, and they would need to, if they want it read, they need it sent in by noon on the second, and don't assume that there will be anything happening on the third as far as public comment. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Great. Any other, any other questions of the director? Not seen any. I'd like to move to announcements. And first, I want to do a couple of procedural announcements, and then I'll ask if commissioners have announcement. So the announcement for public comment procedures, please note tonight's procedures for public comment, we are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call. Once the caller queue for each item opens, the caller queue will open, sorry, the caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public commenters have spoken. Written comments received up to, until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after twelve PM today will be considered part of the record proceedings, but may not have been posted online with the planning commissioner's agenda prior to the meeting. Moderator announcements, the moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help only from administrative staff. It is not for public comment. Commissioners cannot read the chat comments, and the comments will not be forwarded to the commission during the meeting or entered into the record. At this point, I'd like to ask commissioners if they have any announcement. Seeing none, I will move to the next item, which is consent calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar.
Actually, Chair?
Commissioner Landris?
Yes, I'm having corresponded with staff. I don't know how other people feel about it, but I would be prepared to move six A to the consent calendar unless there's a need for a full public hearing on this. So I'll make that motion to move six A to the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Commissioner Fresco?
I actually do have a question that I wanted to ask the applicant about this project, so I would like to proceed normally.
Commissioner Raskin?
Okay, in that case, I'll withdraw my motion, but I will be moving later to waive the staff report and see if we can handle this with some alacrity.
Okay.
If that's all right.
John!
You're gonna have to-
Trying to give Jim the record for fastest planning commission meeting ever.
Commissioner Raskin, did you have a comment? Or do you want to?
No need to comment anymore, I'm good.
Great. Okay, so we have no study session items, no continued items, no administrative items. So we're gonna move into public hearings, six A.
I'll move to waive the staff report, although we have expartes, I guess. Sorry?
Hold on. You gotta let me read my, they do this very nice outline for me, I'm supposed to read, so. Anyone wishing to provide oral comment on this item shall call in now. Once you're in the queue, you will hear the meeting, you will hear the meeting over the phone. When it is time for the public comment and it's your turn to speak, you will be notified you are being unmuted by the moderator. At this point, I'd like to ask for any ex parte disclosures. Commissioner Fresco?
I, oh, you know what? I forgot to find the day. About a week ago, I had a meeting with the applicant, and they explained. I should actually back up. Before I had the meeting with the applicant, for many years, I was a Crossroads parent. I have two children who graduated from Crossroads School. They went through middle school and high school there. Neither, we have been alumni for over two years now, or about two years now. And I do not think I have any kind of bias or I certainly don't have any financial interest or personal interest in what happens with the school directly, and I don't think it influences my ability to make a fair decision. That said, I did meet with the applicant last week on the phone, and they ran through the project with me, and in the end, I have to say that I did more talking than they did because there was a Santa Monica story associated with this site that I was suggesting they perhaps recognize. And they seemed very amenable to that, and I just wanted run that by the commission and the applicant and see if we can make it a condition in the thing to make sure it really happens. Because I think it would be great for everyone.
I'm sorry, Nina, I got distracted right when you gave the key phrase there. What did you ask for that they returned?
I wanted some kind of plaque recognition or sign or display or something that they come up with on their own or through some sort of educational program with their students or something, or through work with nonprofits in the city, arts organizations, history organizations, to recognize Mexican-American history that took place on that site.
Great. Okay, thank you for the clarification for me. More ex parte communications? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, on Friday, the fourteenth, I met with the applicant team and we discussed the project, and I have been to the project site many times.
Yeah. Commissioner Lambert?
Today, from twelve thirty to one, I met with the applicant, and I had two major issues that they addressed, and I'm satisfied with, one being construction staging and the other being use of the Performing Arts Center itself. And I also learned, to Nina's point, that the Pac Air used to be an airliner recovery equipment company. And they acknowledged that they actually have a pan am seat in one of their buildings.
Great.
That's it. And I toured the site this afternoon.
Great. Commissioner Landris?
So I met with the applicant, well, I should also back up. The last time, I have not had any interactions with Crossroads in more than, I want to say, a year and a half, but my kids have participated in some of their summer schools. And many, many, many years ago, I am a graduate of St. Augustine's, which at the time was acquired by Crossroads. And so Nat Travis and Paul Cummins signed my diploma. But that was many, many years ago. I did meet with the applicant team on January fourteenth with Elaine Nesbit, CJ Laffer, Barbara Whitney, and Manuel Pardo. And we, I would say the primary outcome from this was an assurance from them that what appears in the plans as as the Cummins Recital Hall is in fact being named appropriately enough for Marianne. And that is, that is what I got out of the meeting, and I'm good to go.
Okay. Commissioner Fondre Bernardi, I'm assuming you do not have, okay? So I met with the applicant team Tuesday, this Tuesday morning at eight forty-five, spent about a half an hour just understanding the project a little bit better. They addressed many of my questions, and I'm prepared to move forward with the, with the hearing at this point. I don't, I think I neglected talking about exactly what the issue is, so let me just say that this is at seventeen thirty-six second, Twenty-Second Street. It's twenty-one ENT oh one two three Development Review Permit. The Development Review Permit to allow the construction of a tier one, two-story, forty-five-foot-high, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight square foot Performing Arts Center at Crossroads, Ull. With that, it's time for the staff's presentation, but I believe Commissioner Landris is going to-
I'm gonna move that we waive the staff report.
Okay.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any comments? Questions? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fondre Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. With that, we now, I think, have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. Does anybody have any questions of staff? I'm gonna ask one. Staff, I did not see any renderings or elevations in the plans. That does not seem typical to me. And I'm wondering if, if there, if that is a new, a new fad that we have where we don't need to provide those, or I missed something in the, in the package?
Apologies if there were no elevations or renderings in the plans. What was posted was what was provided by the applicant. I am not sure if those were originally included with the plans, or if those were provided later. I do apologize if that was not part of the package. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to pinch hit here for Grace, who was the project planner on this one, so.
I can, I'm sorry, Tony, to interrupt. I can find what was submitted for preliminary ARB and share my screen if you'd just give me a moment.
Okay. And I guess while Stephanie's looking for that, the second question I have is on the CEQA clearance, where we're getting a categorical exemption, and we're adding in for an accessory use, but this accessory use has over six hundred and fifty seats. I'm kind of curious what percentage of the student body population is that six hundred and fifty seats? And related to that, just raise a question. We saw a letter today from the Westside Food Bank, I believe it was, who was concerned about the use of a categorical exemption as well. So I'm wondering if staff has any comments on that?
Sure, nothing beyond what we've provided in the staff report, that this qualifies for a Class fourteen exemption, given that it does not increase the existing student capacity at all. I believe the, and I think the applicant can clarify, I believe the capacity of the auditorium would be enough to to hold the entire upper school, Crossroads upper school student capacity, as well as the middle school separately. But it would be able to hold the entire current enrollment, which again is not being increased with this project.
Okay, and then a response to maybe the, the comments we heard from the food, the Westside Food Bank today, which talked about piece, like kind of piecemeal development, they had mentioned, I don't know if they use that term exactly, but they were concerned about the development and the, the number of sites that have been developed around them and the impact to their operation.
Sure. What, this is an interesting, it's a unique school campus, unlike any typical school. It's not contained in, on one site or one property, and it's composed of different buildings within the neighborhood. So we have to look at each component, or we look at each component on its own individual merits for the parcel it's being proposed on, given that it's not one unified campus. So, you know, based on looking at this proposal on this parcel, we believe it qualifies for a Class fourteen exemption.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions at this moment, so maybe we could, we can turn to, Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, I just, because you, because you brought it up, I do want to say that I had an exchange with Tony earlier today, ahead of my hoping that this could go on consent. And he clarified to me, and Tony, I don't know if you want to say what you wrote to me, but I thought that was very helpful in terms of clarifying that the conditions that you laid out that are in the, in the draft STOA, more than respond to the, the concerns that were raised by two letter writers are related to construction-related parking. And in fact, that when construction is complete, as I understand from you, the way the stow is written, they'll have to relinquish the construction parking immediately. It's not like it'll hang out longer than the construction takes. Is that correct?
Yes, and that will be determined through the approval process of that construction mitigation plan.
Okay, I mean, I just, I thought it was worth clarifying that on the record.
Jim?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Commissioner Lambert?
Yes, ma'am. I don't really see anything in the construction conditions about parking. Unless I'm missing it. Would that be number thirty on page twenty-five? I don't see parking addressed.
There is a portion of condition number eighty-six, which is the construction mitigation plan conditions.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
I take it back.
Okay.
So I have the images, if you'd like me to share my screen.
That would be, that would be helpful, and I think it's also, we want to make sure we get that in the public record, too.
Yes, and.
Can you, would you be able to get those added to the agenda so that anyone reviewing this later would be able to see them without having to go to ARB?
Yes, absolutely.
And while she's doing that, I'll just highlight, back to your comment, Sean, about construction impacts. The letter from the Food Bank doesn't really talk about construction impacts. It looks like it's operational impacts that they're referring to?
That's right, but it was also, my understanding of that letter is they were concerned about sort of conflict, operational conflict, and what Tony, it's easier for me to bring it up. And this answers Leslie's question. Condition number eighty-six requires a construction period parking plan which minimizes use of public streets for parking. And condition eighty-six also addresses the general construction concerns of Westside Food Bank. This is from Tony. And he thinks that condition number three addresses any broader parking concerns since non-school-related activities are prohibited in the building during normal school hours, which is when the food bank is usually open. I'm just quoting, but. My impression is that they're trying to, that Crossroads tries to be a good neighbor, and I think both of those letter writers have said that, so hoping they can work it out.
Can you see my screen?
We can.
Great. So this is from the presentation I gave at the preliminary ARB review. This is an image of the project in its site. This is Axon showing, showing the configuration. The materials are different types of metal panel on the sod, as well as glazing on the ground floor. As you can see, the ARB, this would be a good time to tell you that the ARB was very supportive of the project and asked only for, you know, made comments to help further development of the facades and landscaping at the ground floor. There's a courtyard, open courtyard that you move through at the entry. That's the rear. And that's the night view.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I think at this point, unless any other commissioners have questions, let's ask the applicant team to do their presentation.
Pardon, if I may, if I may hop in, it sounded like from her ex parte that Commissioner Fresco had some information on the project. If she could please share any information that she has, so that the applicant and the public could respond to it, that would be most appreciated.
I can do that. I'll show you an image. This is a PDF. Can you all see it?
Yes.
And what is this supposed to say again?
You might have to zoom in a little bit if you start talking about this specific site, but we see your image.
I will. First, I'll tell you what you're looking at, then I'll zoom in. So what you're looking at here is basically a map of where African-Americans and Mexican-Americans lived in Santa Monica, according to the nineteen forty census. So as you can see, they're all concentrated in the middle of the city, in Belmar, a little around Ocean Park, scattered around. No black people outside of Santa Monica or Pico Boulevard. And this here is the Crossroads campus where you see the solid green. Let me zoom in. So this is Twentieth, Twenty-first Street, Twenty-Second Street. So right here where my mouse is, that is the subject parcel. And this neighborhood, as you can see, was entirely Mexican-American families, many related, you know, in one family, there were just lots of people. It was a whole neighborhood and world unto itself that is completely erased. And the Crossroads campus has a really unique aspect in that they decided to retain the street structure that their school is on, which I personally think is a really cool thing about this campus. And there are two buildings already that were homes that they repurposed to use for their school uses, but that actually were homes and of Mexican-American families, some of whom I believe they're even in touch with. And this kind of concentration is really profound, and I have a book that's a memoir of a particular person who grew up in one of these families and became, you know, a well-known singer. And in his memoir, there's actually a photograph of his grandparents' home, which is on the subject property site. And so I was asking because I knew that they had done just a small, little interpretive display about Pacific air and that industrial use that had been in the building that is here, actually. I thought it would be cool to do something simple and in their own special Crossroads-y way, whatever that is, that recognized the Casillas family that had a home where this building is going to be. That's basically what I have for you.
Once again, thank you for the depth of knowledge. So you'll send that to staff, and we'll put that in the public record?
I will. I'll do it right now.
Okay, without any further objections, maybe we'll turn it over to the applicant for their fifteen-minute presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, and thank you for considering our project today. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully, I can remember how to do that properly and then start my presentation. And while I'm doing that, I'll introduce myself. My name is Bob Riddle. I am the current head of Crossroads School. I've been at Crossroads for thirty-eight years. Actually, I started in nineteen eighty-four as a math teacher in the middle school. And for the last thirteen years, I've been fortunate enough to be the head of the school as well. So I'm hoping everyone can see my, my lead slide here?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So let me, and in fact, I think I will be addressing, you know, much of what you've discussed, and you'll see some of the slides here that will look familiar to you as well.
I always like to give a little bit of history about Crossroads because many people don't know much about us, and I love that one of the commissioners is a graduate of St. Augustine because, yes, Crossroads grew out of St. Augustine by the Sea Elementary School in 1971, when the parents and the then-headmaster of St. Augustine, Paul Cummins, were looking to start a middle school and then a high school that continued a lot of the progressive practices and arts programming that they installed at St. Augustine at the time. And so we were founded in a few rented rooms in a church on Pico Boulevard 50 years ago, and then a year later moved to our current campus site on the 21st Street and occupied a building that had been Motherhood Maternity, a maternity clothing warehouse. And that became the home of our middle and upper school campus. Our elementary school campus moved from St. Augustine in 1997 to its current site at the corner of 17 and Olympic as well. I think it's important to note that when Crossroads was founded, it was unlike most other independent schools at the time. You have to recall that the history of independent schools throughout U.S. history is that they were bastions of white privilege. And when Crossroads was founded, Paul Cummins, the founder, and the other founders wanted to create a school that was diverse racially and also diverse socioeconomically as well, and they embedded in our philosophy that very commitment that was not happening at the time at most other schools, and indeed even set aside 10% of their operating budget that year for financial aid, again, something that was not typically happening at other independent schools as well. So that is really at our roots, at our history, that is really part of our philosophy. It's been noted that we are part of the Industrial Conservation Zone in Santa Monica, and as the other commissioner noted, area that has a very, very different history prior to it being the Industrial Conservation Zone. So what we have done over the past 50 years is, as much as possible, repurposed existing buildings, buildings that were either single-family homes, apartment buildings, a body shop, or other kinds of buildings that we repurposed for school year use. Up on the upper right there, you see the Cadena Building. This is a house that was occupied by the Cadena family when I first came to Crossroads in the early 80s. We still call it the Cadena House, and then we have another house on the property named after the Regulato family for Mrs. Regulato and her children who resided there as well. And then on that property, we have preserved all of our fruit trees. We have a plaque acknowledging who she was and the great history that that family has had there. So we are always excited to acknowledge the history of our buildings and of our campus, just as we've done, it was pointed out for the Pacific Air Building that we remodeled last year. So this is the extent of our 21st Street campus right now, or the middle and upper school campus, and you'll see the number of different buildings that we currently occupy. You'll see the location of the site that we are proposing here, which is currently the third of the three Pacific Air industry buildings, as well as some street-level parking that we have here. The rest of the campus, the bulk of which are, you know, repurposed buildings, as I said, and it has a very urban feel to the campus because of the eclectic mix of the different kinds of buildings on our campus. In our 50-year history, we have only built three new buildings on this campus, and that's the Buxomum Arts Education Center that we opened in 1989, the Paul Cummins Library, which we opened in 1996, and then the Science Building, which we opened in 2015. Each of those was designed by a different architect, a different style, to kind of keep with the eclectic urban nature of the campus and of our surrounding community as well. So you've seen the slide already. This shows you areas three and four, the proposed location for our property as well. And then this slide shows how that the building, the proposed building, will fit into the surrounding neighborhood, and I really believe that what the architect has done has really done a good job of kind of preserving and improving the look of the area, specifically being the light industrial zone. I also think it's important to note that, given the eclectic nature of our campus, we have also coexisted with other businesses, with other organizations as well, and we have a longstanding history of working, working very well with them. Most notably, the temple that is across the street from the main part of our campus often uses our site on the weekends for their services, uses our parking for our services as well. So we try to, as much as we can, to work as cooperatively as possible with all of our neighbors. So you've seen this presentation that shows you the street-level view as well. This one, another view. A couple of things to point out is that based on some of the feedback that we got from ARB wanting to make this not only pedestrian-friendly, accessible as possible, you'll see windows here at street level that will allow pedestrians walking by to get us to look down, actually to the stage level just below it, which will be open, except, of course, when performances are happening and it needs to be dark. Similarly, at the other end of the building, we have windows that open up to a filmmaking space as well, so that pedestrians walking by can see some of what's happening in there as well. Here's the night view. Again, the whole idea is to make this this neighborhood, this area more pedestrian-friendly, safer for people to come through as well. We have had night performances, weekend performances, you know, probably most nights and most weekends, you know, certainly as long as I've been at Crossroads here. They've just been located at different parts of our existing campus, and most of those performances and events will now be relocated into this building. So this is not something that will be new for us in terms of programming and performances. You may not know what we have in our performing arts program. It's a very, very impressive, extensive program covering a lot of different fields, a lot of different areas. Something important to note is that we have a number of performance groups, both for classical music, for jazz, chamber music, and for choral music, and those groups have performed from such places as Carnegie Hall and Disney Hall, the Monterey Jazz Festival, Catalina Jazz Club, but they've also performed at Santa Monica Place and on the Santa Monica Promenade. Our filmmakers, our student filmmakers annually screen their student films at the Lemley Theater here in Santa Monica, and our drama tour is often previewing their performances for some of our community organizations. Most recently, they had done it at what then was OPCC and now The People's Concern. I'm just going to very quickly try to make the case for why we need this, because I think many people are surprised how inadequate our spaces are, given how strong the program is and how amazing our teachers are. This shows you our current theater, which only houses about 110 people, and the only lobby space we have is outdoors for it as well. A lot of our storage space is also outside. We don't have a lot of interior storage space for set pieces. You'll see on the upper left, the existing theater has no fly space, no wings. On the right, you see a green room that also doubles as a classroom, as a costume storage, and then during performances, we put up a curtain in there to allow students to use it as a dressing room. Our offices are rather cramped for all of our performing arts teachers as well, and our music programs are also bulging at the seams in their existing spaces. You know, here you see an electronic music classroom on the left and a choral room on the right. So if you, if I could take you around and show you the spaces, I think it would be pretty evident why the spaces are really not supporting both the program or the performances for our music performing arts program. On the left, this is our Soul Recital Hall. It's a recital hall that's also used for meetings, for gatherings, for recording sessions, and sometimes for classes where chairs have to be set up and torn down multiple times a day, and on the right, again, one of our three jazz specialty program rooms. Again, pretty tight spaces, tight quarters for students, given how large those those performance groups are. Something that many people don't know about Crossroads is our commitment to the greater community. And in fact, there's two probably things that we don't do a good enough job of sharing with the greater world, and that is that there are two nonprofits that were started at Crossroads, that were founded by Crossroads. We created the funding for them. We nurtured them here at the school, and then after about a dozen years or so, they went off to become separate independent nonprofits. The first was PS Arts, which is now serving something like 25,000 public school students in Title I schools, giving them fully funded arts instruction that they didn't otherwise or would have had. And the second is a program called PS Science, doing the same kind of thing in the area of a robust hands-on science program. Again, this year, I think they're benefiting more than 5,000 students in Title I schools. There are many Santa Monica schools, both public and private, that are benefiting from those programs. And then there are a number of long-term programs and support that we've given to some of our neighbors. St. Anne's School, and I know that you've seen the letter from St. Anne's School, we've had a close collaboration and provided significant support to St. Anne over the years as well. The One Voice Organization, we have been with One Voice pretty much since its founding, more than 35 years ago, providing support to them and helping to feed families all over Los Angeles. And OPCC, now The People Concern, especially when they moved into our immediate neighborhood. And then our campus itself is often used by many nonprofit organizations for their meetings, for their rehearsals, and the community will often use our soccer field and the community room on the 17th Street Elementary School campus. Financial aid. I mentioned the financial aid that was embedded into our school philosophy. Most people don't know that over a million dollars each year is awarded to students in the Santa Monica area. So they are benefiting from the financial aid program at Crossroads, and in fact, it's important to note that 25% of our students at Crossroads receive some form of financial aid, with the average award being close to 75% of the tuition. In addition to that, financial assistance, every year, we provide more than $100,000 of financial support to students in the Pico neighborhood for our summer programs. Obviously, during the pandemic, when our summer school was virtual, enrollment went down significantly, but our hope is that this summer, we'll be back with another robust in-person summer program. And then there's the Equity and Justice Institute, and the Equity and Justice Institute was launched three and a half years ago to make sure that we are continuing to do the kind of work that we did when we created PS Arts and PS Science by making sure that Crossroads is always serving the greater good, and we did that by endowing the program. And one of the features of that program is the Unis, Estoria, Nazarian Distinguished Equity and Justice Lecture Series, which we are opening to the public free of charge, and we've had such distinguished speakers as Angela Davis, Dolores Huerta, Ibram Kendi, and so many other great speakers. When we've done them on campus, we've had to do them in our gymnasium, and we've attracted about 600, 650 people for those. It's hard to schedule that in the gymnasium around basketball games and volleyball games, and again, it provides problems with setup. This lecture series would now be moved to the location of this new site. And then this past summer, we were proud to be what we believe may have been the first independent school to be a site of the Children's Defense Fund Freedom School Summer Program. And through that program, we provided free six-week, full-day summer school instruction for students in the Pico neighborhood, primarily students of color. We partnered with Virginia Avenue Park for identified families who are interested in that, and we had students from Santa Monica College who became teaching interns to teach those classes as well. We will be continuing this program next summer and in subsequent summers as well, and Crossroads raised 100% of the funding that we needed in order to provide that program for our community. So looking back at sort of the layout of our campus, what you'll see here is how all the disparate programs in performing arts are spread out in multiple buildings all over the campus. That will now be centrally located in one site. But the other thing to note, and it was discussed earlier, when we have student assemblies right now, when we want to have the entire high school or the entire middle school, not both of them together, but just one or the other for an assembly, we either have to do it outside on a basketball court, this outside basketball court here, which again means setting up chairs, tearing them down, you know, you know, we're at the mercy of the weather, of noise. Acoustics are lousy there, so those class gatherings that are so critical to community building would be moving to this auditorium, this 650-seat auditorium, and that would free up that outdoor space for PE and student space that is much needed on our campus.
And thank you. That has been 15 minutes.
Thank you.
So now, commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant team? Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
I have three questions. One having to do with parking. Your parking is actually being reduced 10%. And parking, ironically, was the only problem that people were talking about. The letters of support were wonderful, but there is the fact there's a lot going on in that neighborhood in those three streets. So how are you going to compensate for the loss of parking, the objective?
Well, from what I understand, we've actually been slowly adding parking to our campus, some of it because of the acquisition of some additional buildings in anticipation of losing some of the parking that would be having on the surface, street parking as well. So our existing parking, I think, exceeds the requirements that are in place for our campus, given the size of our campus, the number of classrooms and so forth. But I think the other thing to note is that we are very aggressive in providing both incentives and disincentives for people, incentives for people to come to campus either using alternative means of transportation, the light rail line, public transportation, bicycles, or to carpool. So people will get paid. They will get compensated if they come to campus that way, and we will charge people who come to campus driving alone for individual parking spaces. So what that has done is allowed us to not need any more parking than what we currently have on the campus. But we believe we're going to be adequately parked for our site, given our current parking, number of parking spaces.
Okay, and maybe this is a question for your architect. I don't know if they're available, but this is a question that comes up every project, the bigger, the more serious the question, is that your actual roof surface devoted to solar collectors is remarkably small. It's only 10% of your lot area, and, you know, and it quote-unquote meets the city standard, but the city standard is notably weak and does not really get anywhere near the kind of energy that we need to produce from our buildings to keep us from reaching mass extinction, which is not too far away, as you all know. So why is your is your solar collectors so tiny? You know, they're useless. They're basically, it's like a joke. It's almost like a a fig leaf there. Where's the commitment to really showing students the way buildings should be built, the way buildings should operate in the future?
That's a good question, and I'm not sure that I have the answer to that, but we do have our project manager, Elaine Nesbit, here as well. Our architect is not on here, so Elaine, I don't know if you can share the plans in terms of solar panels?
Yes, so we're at a very conceptual level on these drawings, as you may know, and there is space needed for mechanical equipment, but our commitment, of course, to solar is strong. When we did the Science Building, we added solar glass on the exterior, which was a very unique thing at the time. And then we came back and we added solar on the building as well as solar on other buildings on the campus itself. So our goal is, of course, to do better. We will absolutely meet the city requirements. But again, in terms of how much roof space we have, the idea is we'll certainly provide what we can. The project is part of that.
My last question is, are you doing anything for stormwater storage or stormwater recharging of our aquifer?
And that is a great question for me, too, Bob, if I could step in. Absolutely. We have stormwater recharge that we built as a part of the Science Building, which was incorporated into the project, and we have a system very similar. The good thing is we have great percolation rates of our soil here so that we can actually take all the stormwater that's collected from the building and send it into giant tanks, which will then be able to seep back into the aquifer. So that's a part of the project. We've shown that on our conceptual drawings, and as we move forward into more detailed drawings, we will absolutely provide those details to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'd like to just follow up on one question Commissioner Fonda Bonardi had. On your incentives, get people not to drive, which is fantastic. This was a big source of discussion the last time you guys came for the Science Building, for the planning commission. Can you talk a little bit and let the commission know? And if maybe you don't have it right at the second, but you can provide it before the hearing's over, what was your ARVP, or you know, what was what were you trying to get to in terms of people per car, and how close have you gotten over the course of the last six years that you've been doing this?
You know, I don't have those numbers exactly. I know we have increased that. You know, I don't have those numbers exactly. I know we have increased that over the years. And I can certainly get those numbers for you. What I can tell you is, just anecdotally, the disincentives, you know, for people who are driving alone are so painful that it is the most common complaint we get from employees is about how expensive parking is. And, you know, they don't like paying for parking. And so the incentives have really encouraged many of them to be more creative about how they come to campus.
Well, I certainly don't want you to lose your good educators, but that is a great thing to hear, that that is their biggest complaint.
It really is.
But I would like to hear those numbers, if possible, before the hearing's over.
Okay, I will see if I can get those. I'll do my best.
Next commissioner, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Frisco?
Given the discussion I had with the team last week, and then the report I made on that discussion in the beginning of the hearing, are you guys amenable to the commission adding a condition that you do some kind of open-ended recognition of the Mexican families who lived on and around the site?
I think we're not only open to it, I think it's an amazing idea. And I think in particular, because the Equity and Justice Institute will also be part of this building. I mean, it fits in so nicely with, you know, the plans for the institute and the mission for the institute as well. So I, in fact, just thinking out loud here, I think it would be a great project to have some students get involved in, to help us sort of create it, to write that history and figure out the best way to present it. But absolutely, that's an easy one, and I think it's certainly in line with who Crossroads is.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioner questions at this moment? Okay, seeing none, I will thank you for your presentation. I think at this point, we'll open it, I think we're going to open it up to public comment. So announce again that the caller queue is open. And I'm curious to staff if we have anybody in the queue currently.
We sure do. We have four callers lined up so far. If we're ready, I will introduce our first caller.
I believe we're ready.
All right. Hello to our first caller. You're off mute. You're live in the meeting, and you have three minutes for comments. Please clearly state your name for the record.
Marisol Leon. Hi, good evening. My name is-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, good evening. My name is Marisol Leon, and I'm a civil rights attorney and adjunct professor. I'm also a Crossroads alumna, and I want to take a few minutes to expand on the school's commitment to the greater community. My older sister and I grew up in Mid-City, Los Angeles, a working-class Black and Latino neighborhood. We both attended Crossroads through the A Better Chance program. And attending Crossroads completely changed the trajectory of our lives as first-generation Americans. At Crossroads, my sister participated in dance and theater classes. She was the first person in our entire extended family to go to college. There she continued to take theater classes and attended the Marshall School of Business. After she graduated, she pursued acting. At Crossroads, I fell in love with writing and the school's commitment to social justice. So I joined the paper, actually wrote a piece on the Regalado House and interviewed Ms. Regalado. And I joined student clubs that sought to advance racial and economic justice. I graduated and attended Yale College, where I founded a magazine and continue to pursue my passion for writing. Because of this passion and Crossroads' commitment to the greater community, I returned to Crossroads as a faculty member in 2009. I taught sophomore English and incorporated post-colonial texts into my curriculum. And I served as advisor to the paper I once wrote for as a student. Teaching at Crossroads was instrumental to my professional development. I use lessons learned at Crossroads in the current classes I teach at Occidental College with its Critical Theory and Social Justice Department. But the school's 50-year commitment to social justice and equitable access to education goes far beyond individual Crossroads students and educators. As Bob Riddle mentioned, in the 80s, the school formed the Crossroads Community Outreach Foundation, and Crossroads funded and launched PS Arts and PS Science to bring specialized, much-needed classes to local Title I public schools. These programs were so successful that they're now independently-run nonprofit organizations. And my eight-year-old nephew is actually one of the many students that has taken advantage of PS Arts at his elementary school. Crossroads also launched the Saint Anne's Council to provide financial stability to our Title I neighbor. And this commitment to our surrounding community is also what motivated me to join the Crossroads Board of Trustees in 2017. And I'm also incredibly proud to be a member of the Equity and Justice Institute's Advisory Council. The institute launched in 2018, and its programming includes the annual speaker series that Bob was talking about, which is free and open to the public. Each speaker has drawn hundreds of participants. So thousands of Santa Monica residents have joined us in person and virtually for talks by speakers like Angela Davis, Dolores Huerta, Nikki Giovanni, and Robin DiAngelo. And the institute began hosting a children's defense and freedom school site, also like Bob mentioned, on campus last summer in 2021, offering a cultural and literacy enrichment program for 50 kids from the Pico neighborhood and their families. And the institute will enjoy space in the new auditorium building to accommodate the tremendous local interest in the speaker series, as well as our freedom school, and as a testament, our commitment to the greater community and social justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? We do not. Thank you for your testimony tonight. Before we go to the next speaker, I just want to remind everybody that the call-in number is on the screen. Call in for this project, and this will, this queue will be closed after the fifth person speaks tonight. Please call in right now. And the next speaker?
Hey, our next speaker. Hello, you are now live in the meeting, and you have three minutes for comments. Please clearly state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Levi Port. I am a proud 2020 Crossroads graduate. I participated in theater at Crossroads all throughout my high school experience. I spent years eating lunches, attending rehearsals, and hanging with friends in that little black box theater. I've now taken my talents to Dartmouth College, where I have joined an a cappella and improv group. And I actually recently returned to Crossroads with my improv group to perform. So you see, both the arts and my alma mater are very special to me. My college isn't a school for the arts, far from it in fact. But somehow its facilities are vastly improved on Crossroads. In some ways, that makes sense. But Crossroads is a school for the arts. It's a special place where I went from being a multi-sport athlete in middle school to a full-fledged theater kid in high school. But that small theater has unfortunately always been limiting to me and my friends. Bar seating, a mini green room that sometimes is occupied by 30 cast members, no central area for props and costumes. So a fully-equipped 650-seat theater would change the game. No longer would faculty and students spend countless hours of show just trying to organize and store props. No longer would my friends and family miss seeing me in a production of Oklahoma. No longer would the school for the arts be inferior to its West LA high school peers. And having experienced more equipped facilities in college, I know that if I had this new theater while I was at Crossroads, I'm certain that I would have seriously considered pursuing the arts in higher education. What Crossroads currently has is just not enough. And as an alumnus who has currently set aside studying my midterms for the night to speak, this new theater really does feel important, not only to current students, but to former ones too.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, I'll thank you again for your testimony, and we'll go on to the next speaker.
Hey, our next caller has now been taken off mute. Hello, you are now live in the meeting. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for your statements.
Kate Flanagan.
Welcome, Kate. You may begin.
And thank you. So my name is Kate Flanagan, and I'm the executive director at Kehila Marav, the Westside Congregation. And we are a 21st Street neighbor of Crossroads. I have only been the executive director for a little over two years, but I know that our relationship with Crossroads School is longstanding and deeply meaningful for both of us. Not only do we exchange information, we exchange pleasantries, and we really do our best to be thoughtful and considerate neighbors to each other when it comes to space planning, large events, even just sharing some of our events with each other so that we can encourage participation from both the school and the congregation. Unfortunately, this commission meeting is happening right before our board meeting. But we are planning on taking to our board our support for the project, and we are hoping to have it in writing for Crossroads and for the commission shortly afterwards. As I just mentioned moments ago, the relationship is very important to us, and we're very proud of Crossroads and their expansion and being able to do this for their students and what it means for the broader community in Santa Monica. And so we are hopeful that by night's end, we'll be able to officially put our support behind the project in a more formal way for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? We'll move on to the next speaker.
Hey, our next caller is now off mute. Hello, welcome to the meeting. Please clearly state your name, and then you may begin your statement for three minutes.
Tomas Siquez Lynch. Hello, I'm a current senior at Crossroads and enrolled in the Drama Conservatory program, where I focus primarily on directing and technical theater. Crossroads introduced me to theater in sixth grade, and I've been heavily involved ever since. The Crossroads Theater Program has had a profound impact on my life, and I'm thrilled that Crossroads is building a new building to house the program in a place that reflects how incredible it already is. Current facilities aren't equipped for the classes and extracurricular work that goes out of them. The current scene shop is outdoors and was pre-pandemic. And the set pieces we build are limited by what we can carry across campus to the theater and what will fit through the theater doors. The new planned theater will have elephant doors, doors as large as an elephant, and more space for sets, which will open up a ton of creative possibilities. Due to the limited space of the theater, my directing class regularly has to meet in a gym to block scenes we're working on. The storage space in the theater for props and costumes is also overflowing and hard to use. So the extra space in the planned performing arts building will dramatically improve the way theater at Crossroads functions. Right now, I'm working as the assistant director for our spring musical, Rent. Naturally, the show involves a lot of singing, dancing, and acting. So we need to use the dance studios and the music rooms in addition to the theater. Currently, those rooms are spread out across campus. They can make coordinating rehearsals difficult. Having all the performing arts classrooms close to each other would make it so much easier to do interdisciplinary work like musicals. I can't stress enough how much this new theater will mean for generations of Crossroads students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to our next speaker. I think though this is going to be number five, so we have one more speaker before we close the queue.
Hey, our next caller is now being taken off mute. Hello, welcome. You are live in the meeting. Please clearly state your name, and then you may begin your statement. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Aiden Cook. I'm a senior at Crossroads, and I'm currently an actor in Crossroads' Drama Conservatory. Currently, we use our black box theater and the dance rooms and the gym and wherever place we can really find to house our drama classes. But that makes it hard to consistently know where to go for class, and it can be very disruptive and not conducive to, like, learning as much as we could be. So having a theater where we know where to go and where we can have rehearsal space without other classes or other programs using it at the same time would be very helpful for both classes and also for programs such as our new musical rooms that we're performing. That's not our new musical, but anyway. Also, having a new, larger theater would make, first of all, a lot more people be able to see our productions. And it would also heavily increase the value of our productions as we would have a larger theater where we can have a more elaborate set. And even just the vertical space of the theater, currently we're limited to one and a little bit more than one platform. So we don't have much space. But with this new theater, this new 650-seated theater, we will be able to have a lot more space. So basically, this will make our programs a lot more appealing to the Santa Monica community as a whole. And it will make both rehearsing and having class a lot more easier on the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we have two more coming in.
Great.
Our next caller has been taken off mute. Hello, you're now live in the meeting. You have three minutes for your statement, and please state your name for the record.
Tony Huntost. I am a middle school and upper school music director at Crossroads and have been there for nearly 20 years. And yeah, our facilities certainly, you know, leave a lot to be desired. And it's been one of the challenges, certainly, that has come up a lot over the years. We tend to have more students who are interested in our classes than we are able to accommodate. So we are routinely settling around, looking for different spaces. And for one thing, we're all, we're spread out across campus, as Bob alluded to earlier, and I think Tomas mentioned earlier as well. So at any given time, there's modern music happening, actually down the street currently, and theater and choir classes happening at different spots across the street from where I'm at. And then Emmys rehearsing in the multi-use rock hall, which will have all sorts of things happening, and there's sort of setup and teardown that's involved in. I think, you know, it's very exciting for us, the opportunity to have all of the arts under one roof or in one space where it just gives us a lot more opportunity for collaboration, for one thing. And it really just gives us, you know, kind of a proper home. We've turned out a lot of great musicians and artists over the years. And I think it would be wonderful to see the facilities at Crossroads, you know, match the, you know, level of talent and their heart and dedication to the arts over the years. So yeah, thank you for considering this performing arts center. It's very exciting.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
And our final caller is being taken off mute. You are now live in the meeting. Welcome. You have three minutes for your statement, and please state your name for the record.
Su Hong. Thank you. I'm Su Hong, and my son is currently a senior and is the flautist in Crossroads Jazz A Band. And Crossroads and the Performing Arts have saved his life. It's not an obvious story. When he applied as a freshman, he was an athlete, and performing arts were the furthest from his mind. We met coaches, we met players, we looked at practice fields, and he picked up the flute the summer before starting at Crossroads because he wanted something easy to carry in his backpack to fulfill his arts requirement. And that could have been the whole story. But as a closeted, gay, 15-year-old athlete, trying to find a way to become himself, Crossroads and Jazz gave my son an unlock. He spent the days pre-COVID, driving all around Los Angeles, actually, I was driving him, to rented theaters. He crammed himself into those practice rooms that barely had room for him to stand at six feet one with his flute in place. But Jazz carried him through the tough days of COVID, and there were some pretty tough days. Last year, he entered his first music competition with the Music Center's Spotlight Program and made the semifinals. So I think about that, someone who could barely play a song on his flute a few years before, and Jazz and Crossroads-
So it reads as agreed to by the applicant. To assist the public in understanding the historical and cultural importance of the area that is at the Crossroads Upper School campus today, the applicant shall design and install a commemorative artwork, sign, display, and/or plaque adjacent to, near, or upon the Performing Arts Building. Public signage, artwork, displays, or plaques installed at the site may incorporate historical information and/or photographs through any creative medium. The commemorative signage or artwork should include or interpret information specific to the history of the site and its historical association with the city of Santa Monica and its Mexican-American population. This signage, artwork, or display may be developed with the assistance of local nonprofit arts and history organizations and may include elements generated within the school community as part of an educational program.
Okay. I just asked that we add something in there that says that it's visible from the public right, that's something about it being very visible. Because I know there's some other signage and plaques that we have around the city that are put in areas which are less visible and I think this is.
Yeah, this is not exactly actually what I wrote. This looks like it was a little edited because I actually said that. I said a plaque adjacent to, near, or upon the exterior of the building or in a public area inside the performing.
I think it's better, I think it's better, I think it's better as exterior and visible from the public right of way.
Well, I think they should decide. I mean, what if somebody is like a genius paper mache artist and that's what they want to display? I don't think it should be outside.
I didn't say outside. I said, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Let's just say we're putting it inside or outside, as long as it's in like a public space and not in a dressing room, I think it's fine.
Oh, so adjacent to, near.
Basically, it can be on the sidewalk, which is adjacent to the.
No, 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 don't, no, 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 don't take that out. Whoever took that out, put that back, please. Sorry. It should be visible from the public right of way. It doesn't need to be on the exterior of the building. It can be inside the building as long as it's visible from the public right of way.
How is that possible?
You can have a window. You can have a, you can have a, you can have a window, you can have it in a public area, in the little courtyard area, so you can see it from the public right of way.
I think that it's, it could be a challenge, Sean, if it's like in their lobby or in their courtyard and be visible from the public right of way. So what I would be more comfortable, I would be comfortable with is if we say the exterior of the building visible from the public right of way or in a public gathering side inside of the, of the.
Yeah. Well, isn't your point that you want it accessible to the public?
Well, but if 650 families are showing up there, I mean, you know, I mean, I think.
Okay.
You're right. We do want as many people as possible to see it. But it's not a street that a lot of public people are walking down.
That's true. You're going there for a reason. Yeah, you're right. I was just, I was just imagining, you know, your point about, yeah. That's good.
Yeah. I mean, the goal is also to keep it open-ended so that it can be a student-driven idea too, that I just really like.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Do we have any other comments by commissioners at this point?
No.
I'm going to just say, and I know I'm not going to fall on this sword, but they talked a lot in their presentation to me about the building had some shapes in it that were shaped consistent like music instruments. And there was a couple of little areas where there was curvatures on a couple of the corners. It's very, very likely those kind of things get value engineered out of the project once they start designing it. I don't know if anybody thinks that that's something we should ask the ARB to make sure is included in there.
I don't, I don't even remember it.
I, I don't know. I think.
Look, I don't see four, I don't see four hands going up really quickly, so let's just move to the next.
I don't want to put anything in there that's going to make it hard for them to meet everyone's requirements.
Yeah.
They just sold it, sold it to me as that was an important part of their design.
I would like to remove the question.
Chair, because the condition proposed by Commissioner Fresco isn't, I mean, that, this sort of thing is really not within, normally within the purview of a DRP, but because the applicants indicated they're amenable, I think if we would advise perhaps that we just ask the applicant that the way the condition was slightly amended is okay with them. Because again, this would normally be something that, you know, we would include in a project description or something. It's not normally within the purview of the DRP. But because they're agreeing to it, I think we want to make sure that the way it was amended is okay.
Okay. I don't think there'll be any objection from the commission.
Let's ask them.
I'm back. Yes, the way I understood that and read that very quickly, but I, I believe we can, we can do what you're suggesting. I appreciated the flexibility that you're giving us because you're right. You know, if we have some students designing this, students are very out of the box and creative in what they're thinking about in terms of how best to represent something like this. So I don't know what format it will take and it could be on the exterior of the building or it could be in the lobby, which I'm guessing may make more sense. But I'm seeing that we've got that flexibility in here and there's no limitations on the kind of signage or artwork that we're using to do this. So yes, I'm excited about it.
Great.
Sorry, while we still have you, because you're talking about the lobby. If I can jump in, we have this language in a location accessible to the public. You are a school. You may be opening the recital hall for, you know, in the theater for public access on event nights. I just want to be careful with staff that we're not accidentally throwing in a requirement here that's going to backdoor a requirement that this building be open to the public because this is a school. So, you know, I just, let's just make sure that that language does not accidentally create a problem for them.
I think they, I don't really see that happening and I think they've agreed to it, so that would be a.
Okay. Staff, is it understood that accessible to public means when the school is open to the public? Not, you know, 24/7 or whatever? As long as it's under, I just want to put that out there because we're talking about a school. I don't want to create a problem.
Thank you.
If, if it would make you more comfortable with in a location accessible to the public or in a location when the school is accessible or something, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be better. Accessible to visitors, you know. I think if you just say accessible to visitors, it does the trick.
Can we just take a vote?
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's good. That's good. I just, you know, just take out the first word, public. Sorry, Leslie. Accessible to visitors or when the school is open to the public. Yep. Yep, something like that. Cool.
Okay. I think we have a first, a second, and we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And yours?
I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I also forgot to say, I assume we're, Leslie is our.
What?
I don't know. You look like you wanted to say something.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. I hope that the rendering, the elevations and renderings make it into the public file as well.
Yes, they are posted onto the, they haven't posted the agenda for the duration of this hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
For clarity, my motion was the DR and the STOA, but if you need a separate vote on the STOA, we can do it.
That was fine, as long as it's, that was the DR and the STOA, you don't need a second vote.
Nina, right? We were doing the DR and the STOA.
That's why we looked at that language.
Okay, great. So we're going to close this, this item, thank the applicant team for their presentation. We have no resolutions, next agenda item. We have three written communications that I hope everybody has reviewed. Reviewed. We can't take any public action on them at this point or discuss them. Wondering if the planning commissioners have any discussion items they would like to put on?
Chair, can I just ask, our rules of order allow our chair to appoint the representative for, to, you know, the presumption is the chair speaks, but, or to appoint someone to speak at the appeals. So are we, we could just leave that with, with you and Elisa to work out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I will take your word for that and staff and Elisa and I will, will find somebody to get there. We could volunteer one of you guys though. At this point, I, I will say that, do we have any other public input as our next agenda item? On non-agendized items, is there anybody in the queue?
Oh, not yet, but we do need to put up our one-minute timer just to be sure. Let me share my screen. Call it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to announce our adjournment at 6:55 in the evening and hope you all have a nice rest of your night.
Thank you.
And Chair, I'd like to hope that you had a nice feeling of deja vu carrying the planning commission. It must have brought memories back.
It does. It does. I do enjoy doing the chairing stuff and I remember the last time we had a hearing with Crossroads, it was, it was a lot more animated, let's say, and contentious, so this was good.
Good night.
All right, everybody. Bye.